Welcome to North TV's One-on-One with the Plainville Select Board Candidate Special in advance of the Monday, April 1st town election. Polls will open at 7:00 a.m. on Election Day and will close at 8:00 p.m. All precincts will once again vote at the Public Safety Building at 194 South Street behind Plainville Town Hall. North TV will once again be your exclusive source for live election results beginning at 8:15 Monday night on our Plainville Channel Comcast Channel 8. We'll also stream those results to watch on any device at plainville.northtv.net, a free service to all Plainville residents. I sat down for interviews of approximately 15 minutes with the two candidates seeking one three-year seat on the Select Board. The interviews are listed in order: incumbent Jeff Johnson and Stanley Whiteack Jr. Jeff, let me begin by asking, why are you a candidate for Select Board once again?
Well, Peter, it's a great question. I've served a couple of terms already, and while I'm proud of the accomplishments we've made and what we've done and changed in the town for the better for the last six years, I feel there's work still to be done. I wanted to improve our water situation. We have improved it, but we need to finish it with the water treatment plant. We wanted to restore some fiscal controls into the town, and we've done that, but we have some fiscal challenges coming up, and I want to be there to help make sure we don't -- that we answer those challenges without losing the progress we've made.
It seems like one of the first interviews I did with you, we were talking about Plainville's finances, Proposition Two-and-a-Half overrides, and so on. I look at it now, and the town's come a long way.
We certainly have. Certainly, we had to make some tough decisions four and five years ago, and we've benefited from good, solid commercial growth. We've also benefited from solid fiscal management. We didn't used to have a free cash policy. We didn't have a stabilization fund policy, and we really had misused those historically. And one of the things that I did that I'm most proud of is writing a free cash policy and a stabilization fund policy that's helped guide us and helped protect us even as we've enjoyed increased revenues to not frivolously be using those.
The industrial business park has just exploded. Thermo Fisher, I mean, that's big money coming into town. I forget the name of the other warehouse.
The CRG Warehouse.
CRG Warehouse is now in town as well. It's easy to put money aside in free cash when you have money coming in and you're not laying people off. How big of a factor was that?
It's huge. I mean, I hate to assign percentages to it, but it's tremendously significant. You know, whenever you can have somebody, the quality of Thermo Fisher come in, the amount of tax revenue associated with it, and a relatively lesser impact on your balance sheet from the expense side, you benefit. So having an extra million or $2 thanks to that, of course, that's wonderful, and that does make a big difference. Certainly, I think the biggest difference it has made is it helped us come back faster.
Is there room available in Plainville for more growth like that?
There is. We're not going to see something the size of a Thermo Fisher certainly, but we have -- excuse me, we have some other sites available still for industrial growth, and we also have some sites available for redevelopment that maybe have been developed in a certain way that we could take a look at and perhaps improve what's there.
I know the old Plainville Drive-In. Showing my age there, but I remember going to movies there. There was talk about something possibly going in there. What has happened to that?
It's a little quiet right now, but it's still there as a site which can be developed and used pretty beneficially on that road.
Are the costs of building right now and the high percentages in borrowing, is that stunting growth right now?
That's absolutely a huge factor. It's slowing expansion everywhere, and it's not just the cost side, it's the availability of supplies and labor and construction companies and whatnot. So that's played a factor in why we've had less development over this last year, and I think it will last for another two or three years where we will have less development. But I don't think -- we're not done. Certainly, there's other sites besides what we've just mentioned. BASF will be coming online. We have some other spaces along Route 1. There's still some room for improvement in the industrial park. So we have opportunities. We just -- we'll have to be patient, I think, before we see those leveraged.
Marijuana is now sold in the town of North Attleboro. That wasn't the case when you first ran for office years ago. Does bring in money to the town. Is it the type of money you thought it would be?
Oh, it's not. The Cannabis Control Commission has recently changed the guidelines on what you can accept for community impact fees, so we're probably looking at that being phased out. But the revenue from excise tax is still a meaningful number. You know, it's somewhere just under $300,000 a year, so that's nothing to sneeze at.
If re-elected to a third term, you would be serving for three years. What in your mind is the biggest issue or issues that you would be dealing with?
I think the biggest issues will be the continued development of a water treatment plant. That's -- that, to me, is number one, because if we don't provide -- I said this six years ago, if we're not providing good water to our residents and to our businesses, we have no ability to grow, and as a matter of fact, we'll strangle ourselves. And having a water treatment plant that has more capacity and will also treat the PFAS is critical. So that's number one. Number two, I think, are the financial challenges we'll have, partly paying for that plant, but also paying for the tri-county school. That's going to be the biggest -- excuse me, the second biggest project in terms of cost to Plainville in our history.
Plainville has, I believe, second or third largest population going to tri-county.
We are third.
North Attleboro is fortunate. They have the largest, but it looks like Mike Borg will be able to absorb that out of his annual budget. Is Plainville in that position? And if not, where is the money going to come from?
Well, it's a great question. I don't think Plainville's in the position where we would choose to absorb the entire thing out of our operating budget. Certainly, we know from recent history that asking the residents of town for a $1.2 million a year override is not a place that we want to go, and I don't think that's reasonable either. I do think we have some expiring debt from -- associated with the construction of our local schools. We could look at applying that. We could look at applying some of our new growth and some other budget measures and find a mix that gets us there. But I think it's going to be incumbent on us over the course of the summer to come up with two or three different ideas and present them to the town and let the town choose.
You mentioned the water, and the PFAS issue is an issue not only in the town of Plainville, throughout all of Massachusetts. All dealing with the similar situation. Have there been federal funds, state funds that have come in to help Plainville deal with that?
There have been some small amounts of federal funds associated with it. Not significant yet. We're still working on trying to get something bigger. We did get about a $1 million grant that's going to help, but we're looking at a plant that's going to cost us 15, 20, 25 million dollars. We're, you know, trying to find out what the construction cost will really be, but it's going to be an expensive plant.
Well, let's talk about the downtown. Your most famous resident, owner of an unlikely bookstore, has plans for the other side of the street. They look absolutely wonderful. As a matter of fact, all four corners would be owned. How big is that going to be to the town of Plainville? Because Plainville, when you think about it, you drive through downtown Plainville, even on TV, Mayberry had a bigger downtown than Plainville did.
It's true. I think from a Plainville pride perspective, what Jeff has already done with an unlikely story, which I think is the finest bookstore in all of southeastern Massachusetts, is amazing. When you look at what he's planning over the next few years for the downtown area, that really turns the downtown of Plainville not into something you pass through on your way to rent them from North Attleboro, but something you go to, something with activities, something connected to our parks, something connected to the bookstore, which is already a wonderful destination, and really gives an opportunity for an event space, just a gathering spot for all the community and for the surrounding towns. I think it's going to be wonderful.
Another key -- key area of the downtown that needs development is the old Public Safety Building. What's going on with that?
Well, we've had a couple fits and starts there. The original purchaser of the building, his development plans fell apart. We have somebody new owning it, and he's -- excuse me, he's put together a couple proposals that he's brought forward to the planning board, and there's a lot of discussion going on. It's a real struggle, balancing between everybody's desires for something as wonderful as what Jeff Kenny's doing in the center and having illusions of what we would like to see there, and that's a wonderful goal, versus the reality of what people are willing to invest money in. And we need to find a middle ground that allows an owner of a property to develop it in some manner that can be economically successful, but within the character of what we want in the downtown. So I think there's going to be a lot of conversations over the next year or two around that project.
Much like the old Plainville Drive-In, are the costs to borrow money and building right now hampering that as well?
I think that hampers it as well. I think in this case, it's more hampered by what the owner would like to do with the property versus how we would like to see it developed. Money is certainly always an issue in terms of what kind of business could be economically viable there, because we all know what a challenge it is to have retail and other spaces downtown stay economically vital and vibrant. But we need to find that sweet spot.
Affordable housing. The state defines affordable housing based on median income, et cetera. They're looking for communities to have 10% of homes available or housing available to be affordable housing. Where does Plainville fit in?
We are well above that limit right now.
Really?
We are, and thanks in large part to a couple of our most recent apartment complex developments.
You guys are the exception.
So that gives us some flexibility, and one of the ways we try to maintain that flexibility is making sure that every project we add and we consider of any size keeps at least 10% available there, so we always keep our number above.
I know sometimes in a small town, and it was the case in North Attleboro before they switched forms of government, planning board has so much authority, zoning board has, and people weren't walking in step with each other. Is that the case in Plainville?
I -- you know, there was a time, I think, when different boards competed harder against each other. I really have a tremendous amount of respect for our planning board, for our finance committee, for our school committee, and I think they are led by outstanding individuals in each case. And one of the things I'm proudest about in the last couple of years is working very hard to stay closely in touch with them, not because I should be telling them what to do, because I shouldn't. They know more than I do in those areas, and they do a great job, but we should all be trying to pull in a similar direction where we can, respecting each other's roles.
I know one of the other issues, and it's not isolated to Plainville, but losing public safety officials to other towns. Has that slowed down?
We're in pretty good shape right now. We have relatively new, three years or so, police chief and fire chief, and they're doing a great job, and I see no reason for either of them to be going anywhere. They have strong local ties. At the same time, and this applies to all your department heads, really, you always want to be looking at them and working with them and thinking about succession plans, because they may grow as individuals and have opportunities, and that's the reality. But I think we -- I think we're in a good space there right now.
Jeff, there's two candidates on the ballot on April 1st, you and Stan Whiteack, who served together on the Select Board. Someone is watching this. Why should they give their vote to you, Jeff Johnson?
I think what I would try to convince them of is that I'm a candidate who has more effectively gotten things done, whether it be the financial policies we've put together, the work on the budget, the establishment of our facilities management department to protect some of our existing infrastructure, the work on water and the collaboration with North Attleboro on a joint water agreement. Those are things that I've helped make happen, and that kind of collaborative work extended through and across all the different boards in town, I think, is why I am the best candidate moving forward, because, as you know, we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, and you need to be able to respond to the challenges that we haven't even thought about. And that response isn't going to be just one person. That response is how do you build a team and collaborate across different groups and get the best response possible? And I think I'm better positioned to do that.
Jeff, best of luck on April 1st.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Appreciate this time.
Stan, let me begin by asking, why are you a candidate for Select Board?
Pete, I think that I've been on the board before, and I'm looking for transparency. And what I want to bring to the board is more transparency. I feel that there are only a few people that are involved in the town politics, and the other reason I'm running is I don't think that somebody should just walk into the position. And that being the case, that's why I put my name in for Select Board. I am a little upset that I reached out to three or four people to run against me for planning board, and I couldn't get anybody to run. So people complain, but then we have very few people that want to step up. And I've been there. I am the most conservative guy, and if it was up to me, I would let everybody in the room talk. I don't use a strong gavel. I don't try to manipulate the meetings, and I let people talk. So that's why I'm running.
I ask this of anyone running head-to-head against an incumbent. In this case, you're running against Jeff Johnson, who you served with on the Select Board. Do you think Jeff has done a bad job? Is that why you're running?
I don't think he's done a bad job, but there's always room for improvement. That being the case, as I said earlier, transparency is big, and letting other boards do their job is big also. It's not just the Select Board that watches the whole town. We should let other boards weigh in and consider what they have to say.
You mentioned transparency. You were on the Select Board just 13 months ago.
Yes.
Did you see that lack of transparency back then, or now that you've been off the board?
I see a little of it now that I've been off the board, and the fact is that my intent is to let -- try to get more people involved through transparency. If people knew about this or knew about that, and we brought it up more often, then maybe we could get some people involved in it.
You mentioned Select Board having influence over other boards in town. I remember when I first came to North Attleboro here, planning board would be very stiff when a developer comes in, zoning board of appeals, they all seem to be working against each other. Is it possible that the Select Board trying to guide these boards is trying to get people to work together, or is it more than that?
I agree that they're trying to maybe make people work together, but the controlling aspect of it is bad. One way of working with people, but the idea is if you're trying to control them and you always want the first word and the last word, that's where I don't agree with. Other people have values, they have ideas, they have stuff, and they should be heard.
Now, you certainly remember the two failed override attempts. The town is in a much better position financially right now, thanks in large part to Thermo Fisher coming in, the warehouse coming in, et cetera. Do you see a time where the town may be facing tough financial times again?
Right now, there is not much new development coming into Plainville. The interest rate is high. People are not moving along, doing things, and I think a couple weeks ago, it was shown that our permits is significantly down. And when I say significantly down, they used to run at $1 million a year. Now they're running at $130,000, $150,000 for the year. That shows you that we have to make sure we tighten our belts and don't hire too many new people, because we don't want to get into a situation of layoffs again.
I watched the March 11th Select Board meeting. You were there when the revenue forecast for fiscal year '25 was presented, and it was explained that it's a preliminary projection, but I seem to remember you questioning that it was too rosy a picture up on the screen.
Exactly, and what happens is, you want to be conservative. You don't want to paint a picture that doesn't help you down the road. You can say to everybody, "It's rosy," and then find out that you're going to be short money. You better off to tell people right from the beginning that it's going to be a tough year.
You mentioned no development taking place right now. We're certainly down. Are there areas of the town where businesses, commercial, could still come in? I know there was talk of a business coming into the old Plainville Drive-In. I'm showing my age there.
Yeah, the old Plainville Drive-In, we used to walk down there from Merrimash Street and get on the little fire engine and ride it around, and that project was approved, but because of the interest rate being what it is, that they held up. And so there's a typical example of how things can be stymied, and what happens is we don't have much in the pipeline for new development. We also have a problem with the INI, and that's been an ongoing problem.
INI, for people who don't know?
INI is infiltration, and the idea is that does not work. People that have some pumps in their house that pump in water there make it spike, so we pay a lot of money for our sewer. The other thing is the situation, if you don't have sewer, a lot of these places can't go in. That warehouse, granted, the soils maybe there would be all right, but without the sewer, they really don't want to go in, because they had an office staff there, they had a possible commissary for the people that work there and stuff like that. And when you have that, you definitely need sewer, and sewer is our biggest fault right now. And me, as a member of the board for the last term, I kept fighting and fighting for this, so we wouldn't go into this, quote, sewer moratorium. And right now, we're like in a semi- quasi sewer moratorium, and that is hurting the town, because I know of a couple people that tried to get sewer, and they said, "No, we don't have sewer now." So those projects didn't go anywhere, any further.
Now, granted, I don't live in Plainville, but my guess is there are some residents in Plainville who don't know this either. Where does sewage get treated from Plainville?
Okay, sewage gets treated from Plainville off of Freeman Street in North Attleboro over by the Attleboro Line.
Yes.
Okay? It takes quite a ride from Thermo Fisher all the way down South Street to the intersection of West Bacon, then down the pipeline, down the old railroad bed, down through Cooney Street, then from there, heads out through to North Attleboro, ends up off of Freeman Street into the sewer treatment plant, which Plainville, when they originally started that, has a section of that, has a amount that we can put into that plant. But at the same time, if we have a rainstorm, and because our pipes are old clay and stuff like that, we have such an infiltration that it just spikes it, and so we can sell a million gallons of water that day, but treat 2 million gallons of sewage. So that is costing the rate payers a lot of extra money for nothing, so they have to get the INI under control, and I have been a firm believer that that should have been done years ago. And I don't want to point any fingers on this one-on-one, but they know that I am really upset that we haven't addressed that issue.
Sewer, unless it's rainwater, starts out as treated water. I know treatment of Plainville water is certainly a goal moving forward. The state has the issues with -- I even forget the initials.
PFAS.
PFAS.
And that PFAS is making everybody in the state go crazy.
Oh, absolutely.
Because what happens is you have your federal government that says 100 is good, then you have your state that says, "No, we want everybody at 10," and then later on, somebody in the State House will say, or DEQE, which was DEP now, would say, "Oh, we want it at 4," and that is almost impossible to do. And we -- I find, talking to other towns, that they start working on their treatment plant, and all of a sudden, after they get it half-built, they say it's not going to be sufficient to treat the water for PFAS. So those are those hard chemicals they're trying to get out of the water, and it's like everything else, Pete. Back in the '40s and '50s, nobody knew that all this would come to light.
Are you pleased with the progression towards the new treatment plant, the new wells, et cetera? Because you can't grow without water.
And yes, I'm ahead of the fact that we already found a piece of land, we've already acquired the piece of land. It takes multiple years to get approved from DEP, and I'm finding that sometimes this state regulations are so bureaucratic that it makes it very, very hard. But at least we have the land, the initial test worked out all right. I would hope that on this new well treatment plant, okay, the well and the treatment plant, that by then, there's some federal money to help us along, because something that cost $10 million three years ago is now going to be $25 million two more years from now.
Absolutely. We talked about development, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I want to also be keeping an eye on the time. Development. Where would downtown Plainville be without Jeff Kenny?
Jeff Kenny has done a remarkable job in the center of town. He has more things to do, and when I was with him at the day of Forky's, and he was going to try to redo it, and then it just got overwhelming to try to redo it. So my hat goes off to Jeff for putting up the first building. He has a vision for the town of Plainville. It is going to help the town of Plainville. Being on the planning board also and being a lifelong resident, some people come to me and say, "Well, we don't want it to be Kennyville," and I try to explain to them that at least this man has the monetary ability to make it something that Plainville could be proud of.
Absolutely. Money is always an issue, and Plainville is one of the tri-county communities will soon be taking on the cost of building a new tri-county. Where's that money going to come from, Stan?
Some of that money, we hope, that will come out of some of the stabilization funds and some of the rainy day funds that have been occurring. The trick is that this is one of the reasons why, if you have a rainy day fund and you have $1 million in it, don't be comfortable with that. Make that 2 million, and be careful. Don't spend the money on frivolous things when all of a sudden, you're going to need it for something like education. And you know as well as I do, education is big. Tri-county is a big pill to swallow, but at the same time, I try to tell everybody that lives in Plainville, if you want a plumber, who do you have to call? If you want an electrician, who do you have to call? If you want somebody to work on your air conditioner, who do you have to call? So in my sense, it's an education process that's well-needed, or, you know, those kids deserve the same rights as the kids that want to go to college. That's my opinion.
I know the town's bond rating was improved, which helps when borrowing money. How much money will be coming out of that stabilization fund? Because if you take too much, your bond rating goes down again.
Exactly, and the idea is that's why. We are going to take some money out of the stabilization account, or the Select Board is, "I'm not on there anymore," but they will take--
It may soon be.
Which, God willing, all the people in Plainville watch this and give me a vote, but the fact is that if we take some money out of stabilization, and then later on, we're very cost-conscious of new things that we have. We have a few new things coming up. We have, like you said, we have the well, we have the water treatment plant, we have the tri-county, we have some big items, but at the same time, the two schools are dropping off. So, when they drop off, we can take that and allocate that there. So, that's one of our better ways of doing it. And we're fortunate that the two schools, Jackson and, and where Jackson and Wood School are dropping off, those people, those bonds dropping off and that cost dropping off, we can shift that to the tri-county.
Final question. Two candidates, one will get elected to three years. Why should people give Stan Wydeck Jr. their vote?
People should give me the vote, because I am the most conservative on the board, as I always have been, and the idea is I am for the Plainville residents, whether they be young for education, whether they be old for the senior center, whether they need to have something done in their yard for the DPW. I feel that being in town, that Plainville people should be first. Plainville people should be first, because they're what makes up Plainville, and Plainville's a good town to live in. And I've been living there since 1958, and I have no regrets for it.
Stan, best of luck.
Thank you very much, Peter.
This special, and the Select Board Candidates Forum, recorded in our North TV studio, will be replayed through election night, April 1st, right here on our Plainville channel. So, please, make sure you vote. As I mentioned earlier, polls open at 7:00 a.m. and will close at 8:00 p.m. on Monday, April 1st. Voters in all precincts will cast ballots at the Public Safety Building at 194 South Street behind Plainville Town Hall. North TV's live election night coverage will begin at 8:15 Tuesday night, April 1st, on our Plainville channel, Comcast Channel 8. We'll see you then.